This is zoning board case 23067. Issue is 28W 510 Washington Avenue Investments LLC. The request is to renew or extend a conditional use for group quarters with a maximum occupancy of 12 residents, which was previously approved under zoning petition certain number on January 12, 2021 by the DuPage County Board. Matter was published in the Daily Herald on September 13, 2023. The property is about two and a half acres in Winfield Township, serviced by well and septic. I have no objections from any of the neighboring municipalities or departments of the county to whom the petition has been circulated. And just for the sake of expediency, I'm going to read the exhibits that were agreed to before the hearing at my conference with counsel for the petitioner. Number one is the ALTA survey. Number two is the site plan. Number three is a copy of the existing ordinance. Number four is a photometric plan. Five is a landscape plan. Six is a traffic evaluation for group quarters. Seven is Montanito Winfield Impact Study. Group exhibit eight comprised of seven different documents are the resumes of Samantha Peterson's, Sarah Berger Clark, Sandy Perez, Jessica Schaefer, Erin Bowen, and Brenda, Brenda May, KLA, and Melissa Span. Exhibit nine is the research and support documents from the petitioner. And group exhibits 10 is many pages of what I will mark as presentation materials. So I'll ask the petitioner and witnesses to stand and be sworn and then identify themselves. And please understand that petitioner will make a presentation and then I'll vote of members of the public for comment. And then, well, I'll probably go to the board and then members of the public for comment and then back petitioner for close. So would you be sworn in and then I'll have you identify yourselves after.
You do solemnly swear affirm the testimony about to give this clause in our hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help you God.
Counsel.
Mark Gershon.
Brendan.
George Hayes.
Spell your name, sir.
George Hayes, H A Y E S.
And who are you?
Regional Facility Manager.
Okay.
Samantha Peterson.
Erin Bowen.
Erin Bowen.
And the others are.
I'm a real estate appraiser, property value expert.
Thank you.
Regional Director.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, Mr. Gershon, it's your show. I will say, I made some comments earlier that this matter was before us, three years ago, the petitioner has offered the approved ordinance. There were some issues three years ago that were raised by members of the public and we granted a relatively short, three-year approval of the request in order to sort of test the water and see how see how this operation worked in this facility. So that's an important issue for us to explore this evening and then whatever else you want to present.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. And as we mentioned before we opened the record, somewhat shocking that three years starting past since the last time we were here, but I'm really very pleased that what you're going to hear tonight is that what we presented previously, everything from traffic expertise to property impact information to the improvements of the property. All of it has occurred as we indicated. In fact, our reports, which is the way we like to make them, were too conservative. So you're going to hear as an example, our traffic report identified more traffic that we thought might be generated on the railways than it was. So the actual experience was even better than that. On the property impact report, I think you may remember that there was only one, I believe, objector who was at that meeting, who was a neighbor nearby. It was a person who was immediately adjacent to us and you're going to hear about the fact that their property, which we're pleased that sold, sold for more than they were asking for, sold faster than is the average of the market. So the great, the great news about this is that you guys did want to spend, you do a short period, to my knowledge, fairly unique, sorry. Please, please. But I, our hope is when we're done with this today, that you're going to recognize that your concerns were met. And because this is a fairly small operation in a house there, we will say it's not inexpensive to put together these presentations to work the county on it. At the end of the day, I'll, you know, show you my, my surprise ending, which is that we're going to request that we not have a limited time period on it this time. But that's not something I would ask you to say anything on now. You need to hear from us first. So you've already heard on some of this, but again, you may find it useful to walk through what our PowerPoint when we do this. Let me just check chair since we will be back in for the other property as well. Are you saying the next time if I've got this copy, we could actually put it up on the screen and make it easier for everyone to see or last time you didn't want it on the screen, so.
Well, our experience was that people showed up with a PowerPoint like they just took the course in high school about how to do PowerPoints, but we didn't have the written document.
Right, right.
So we've sort of amended our procedures. If you want to show a PowerPoint, as long as it's precisely duplicated so that we can have a hard copy for the record, again, for the sake of anyone who comes in next month to review the record, I'm fine.
Perfect. I'm not going to do it this time for one thing, to take the time right now to download it, put it up on the screen, more, more time than it's worth, but we will be back before you. As you may remember, there were two of these properties and we will do it then, just so you know. So what you have in front of you is our PowerPoint presentation. It was filed with the village, it's uploaded to their site. What you have, what each of you has in front of you, what's on the site is exactly the same document that we're going to present. And I'll also make sure that's the case the next time we're here. So the history on this property, not going to throw people here, but the history on this property is, is an interesting one because the, this property started off as a permitted use. You allow for an eight, up to eight bedroom facility on this property. I think one of the things we had to get to the last time was people understanding this really isn't a question of whether or not a home for people with eating disorders to work on that is permitted. It is. The only real question is whether we can go from an eight unit home to a 12. And just to remind people, it has been, been three years. The building was built for 12 residents with the knowledge of the county, with our knowledge that we could only use it for eight. So all the facilities were already there. It was operated on eight people. If we had not gotten a conditional use approval, it would still be operated for eight people today. So it was, it was never going away. It was just that the need is significantly greater than even our 12 beds could need. And the ability to use that for the larger group is incredibly important. We appreciate the prior approval. And the fact of the matter is, is I checked with my clients, you know, you never know three years in advance, are we really going to use it? It's essentially operated with the exception of people coming in and going, you know, new, new people coming in. It's pretty much always been at full capacity, which to me is great because it means that it's a facility that's doing what it's supposed to. So, um, again, you unanimously recommended approval of this site back in 2021. It may have actually been the end, the end of 2020, the orders of 2021. You have the ordinance before you, I think it was your exhibit, change number, exhibit three, was the ordinance you passed. That ordinance had a number of requirements for the site. Every single one of those requirements have been met. There were requirements on some landscape approvals, which I'll walk through in a second. Requirements on screening of adjacent properties. And there's a requirement to create a turnaround for a fire truck, all which was put in with, with your fire department's confirmation. So in some respects, normally people might ask then why are we here, right? I will admit, I, I'm seldom back before you twice on the same conditional use permit, but as we said, you, you know, we put a three-year limit on it. And so we're really here to sort of, to sort of show what's, what's happened since then. And as I said, I'm, I'm hoping you'll be quite pleased by that. So just to look real quick through, through the binder here, the first, first page you've got, or second, the cover page is a picture of the house itself. These are all recent photographs. The next is our property. That property I told you that you're going to hear about is actually the adjacent property there. I'll leave that for our cone resident representative to, to walk you through it. But so you can see both, both the properties next door. And the next is just an aerial shot, giving you an idea of what's in that area. We've already met our project team, so in the interest of time, I'm not going to go back through you. They can both talk about themselves, all talk about themselves in great detail, but one of the things we were pleased at in the prior hearing is we have, as outside consultants, two of the really top firms in the state of Illinois and in the country, Cone Resnick, team of 3,000 that worked there on financing appraisal, advising on property. They will be testifying and also KLA, who's been before you many times, traffic engineers, combined 150 years of experience there. And Brendan, who's here this evening, has 10 years of experience in traffic transportation engineering. Montanito, again, I'll let them say more, but, and they spent a lot of time on this the last time they were here, but they're a leading national treatment provider for adults and adolescents with eating disorders. They've got over 25 years of experience in that with multiple locations across the country and accreditation by the joint commission. So I'm going to jump you ahead to the history, which we talked about a little bit. You sort of walked through already the original firm, original ordinance. The application for conditional use, which changed it from an eight to a 12 bedroom facility, your unanimous recommendation of that. And then the, the requirement for three years, but probably the most important that we haven't talked about is that all of the updates, improvements that were identified have now even completed, but they've also been maintained and on, on the property since that time. The, if you go down to the next page on approval renewals requested, one, one thing that is important on this is that we're pleased that we're no longer a new concept. We understand, you know, that there were some concerns and, you know, we all fear the unknown. And we, while we truly appreciate the number of supporters we had for surrounding the Winfield property, the, to us, our, the last almost three years have really given a real sense of what's, what's there. So I want to walk through just some of the changes that were made. If you go forward to that next picture here, this shows you a general overall of the house. So the landscape improved, improvements that we were required to be made to the house. It was a beautiful house to start with, but without any question, there was a need to upgrade and improve that. one of the things that we did on that was to, you requested a landscape plan, that's the next picture, that shows the landscape improvements that were there, that were made in the property. And we've got, you know, we think it added to what was already of your beautiful house, really, really improved that for the area. And then the next couple of pictures, and I'm not spending a lot of time on it because these are all things you previously approved, but just so you know that they happened, you know, we didn't, we listened to you. So the pictures of the flowers that were done, done on the site. The plantings in front of the, the site, you wanted some more plantings to cover the front of the building. And again, this was an existing building, so these were, these were things that were just being added to the existing building. If you move down past the third landscaping one, this was an important one at the last meeting, so I showed you, it's the picture that shows, I guess, four cars and fence. So this is again, the neighborhood had some concerns about, about the impact. And so working with you, with the staff, you asked us to put a fence up here and to add additional buffering. And if you take a look right now, I can tell you when we last, that when we first showed you this, you could see the house. But you can now see what all that landscape buffering has done. And it's really done a nice job of separate the two of us out. And again, one of the other items was the fire department's concern about doing a fire, a fire truck turnaround. That's on this drawing here. And unfortunately, while it's there, it's very hard to see, but at the end of the parking area here, you can see on my drawing, there's now a turnaround here for the fire trucks. And just so you know, the fire department's been out there, they approved this. It's what they wanted to see there. And again, these aren't new things. This was done prior to the 2011. So all of these improvements are in, in place. The last one was our photometric plan. And the requirement is that we would be at less than a half foot candle away from the property. You've got a full-size copy of this drawing, which is clearly an easier one to read all the lines, but your staff has reviewed this and you can see that the full-size property that we complied with all of it. In fact, that point five is so far inside our property, it's not close to the property line. What happened was then this came in, we switched our lighting design and went to low volume ballards going down, which reduced even more of the light that came off the property. Oh, actually, interesting enough, if you don't mind looking at the upper left, left-hand corner of this, that is the fire truck turnaround, which of course comes out beautifully on this picture and not on the one that's about the fire truck turnaround. But it's up in the corner. I want to just be clear before I start trading over the rest of my team, that we're not asking you to consider, and neither are the county codes, whether the use is appropriate here. Your code already says that for eight beds, beds, this is a permitted use in this area. And we operated that way without anything other than your standard approvals for permitted use. We're also asking you to consider what would happen if you granted a conditional use. The unique thing, because we're back three years later, is you did. And so you can see on this property what's happened over the last three years and you'll hear from the testimony. We are pleased by the reports that came in. Honestly, if the report simply said that we did what we said we would do, I would have been happy and would have been very happy sitting here. I'm pleased that in many cases it shows, kind of like those that buffering, it went beyond what, what actually was our requirements. I'm not going to talk about your standards right now. You've got our written response to the standards. I am, as always, happy to walk through each standard individually and review what I've already given you in writing. I would say that I've been doing this for about 35 years and I've never actually had anyone take me up on that offer, but we haven't. That's the reason we write it up is so we don't have to go through. But what's really important, all jokes aside, is that if for any reason you have a question on any of the standards, you feel we haven't given you that information, that's why this large team is here, is to make sure that, that your, your concerns are met. So we've already accepted all the evidence into the record. And the county, I don't know, can't remember whether the staff identifies or confirms on the record that all the notices went out. Good.
Notices to neighbors?
Yeah.
I'm sure they did.
Okay.
So that we don't have to.
Yeah, we, we know those were out there. You received the resumes from all of our experts and we asked that they be accepted on the record as experts, so we can all hear, hear the testimony. And I guess lastly, just want to say, one of the things that mattered to us a lot, mattered in the last process and continues to, is that from the first time I met this client, is that they want to be a good neighbor. They're not only trying to be a good neighbor for the entire community by providing, providing a needed service for people in our community, for the surrounding communities, but also for the people who live immediately around us. So when they bought this property, there were a lot of improvement projects that needed to be done on this property. There was a small house in the back that was torn down, was in very poor conditions. They added all the landscaping, but they also went above and beyond that. This is a private road and they offered, the neighbors accepted, that they now take on, I know at least the snow removals with the other road maintenance on that road for the whole community. So it's all, so it's all addressed there. again, I'm going to come back at the end and close up some of these issues, but now to, to move these more, far more important people than me, I'd like to ask Representative Montanito to come up. Samantha has already been introduced to you, but I'd like her to talk about operations of the property.
Hi, I'm Samantha. I am the regional director. For a little background on me, I'm a licensed clinical professional counselor and a certified eating disorder specialist. So to talk about why this program is so important and why we need the 12 beds, over the years we have at least 140 to 150 clients from this area alone that seek treatment for their eating disorders.
Did you say, I'm sorry, Ms.
Um, over like about 140 to 150 a year in the Illinois area that seek treatment for their eating disorder. And the quality of programming that we provide is weekly sessions with a dietitian, a nurse practitioner, a psychiatrist. They get two sessions a week with their individual therapist and a session a week with that individual therapist and their family to work on what the transition to their home is going to look like. We have a chef that cooks all of their food for them and works on that home-like environment of smelling food in the kitchen that we smell for ourselves as we go home and what that can trigger for our clients as they're working through their recovery. So our total staffing ratio is one to four and we have staff there 24/7, but only two staff there overnight. So there's limited traffic at that time. Overall, our clients have 100% satisfaction rate in their overall treatment experience with us, rating it either good, very good or excellent. And the professionalism of staff as well for their care and rating each staff role as a 4.0 and up out of a 5.0 scale. Nationally, our company has published recently this year, articles in the Journal of Eating Disorders and presented nationally at conferences for the data that we, we're the first company to show lasting effects for eating disorder treatment. So our clients leave eating disorder treatment 90%, showing significant improvements in their eating disorder and at six months post discharge showing 81% of sustaining that improvement. And for their depression symptoms, we see an 88% improvement at discharge and 73% sustain that at six months discharge follow-up. And for anxiety, we see 75% of our clients improve and 71% maintain that at six months. We've been able to publish that data on a national level in peer-reviewed journals. So our vision for this property and what we hope to continue to, to do with the 12-bed continuance is really, I think, summed up beautifully in our mission statement, which is guided by empathy and unwavering support. We challenge harmful norms and work to eradicate eating disorders. And so we continue to do that with our 12 beds in this program. And to quote some of our clients that unfortunately the letters didn't make it here, I'm not sure what happened or where they sent them. But one client who did say she said something, her quote was, "When she left our care, I gained freedom and I learned I can protect myself and feel safe through the quality of care that we provide." And so our clients in this home environment really feel safe and supported and we really work to then make sure that we're not, we are also neighborly and friendly in the area too.
How many facilities do you have in the, in total?
In the Illinois area or in the nation? In the nation, we have 54 facilities.
And the statistics that you gave about population and staff ratios, et cetera, are they applicable to this facility precisely or is that a general rule for your organization?
The staff ratio is a general rule that will also specifically apply to this facility. The statistics I provided on the percent increase of their eating disorder behaviors and those things are a collaboration of all of our data.
Okay. For instance, when you told us about the staff on site, the staff to client ratio, do you call them clients?
Yes.
Staff to client ratio, the two people, two staff people overnight, that is precisely applicable to this facility.
Correct.
And 140 to 150 people a year, that's not at this facility.
That inquire about coming to this facility.
Okay. How many people are, how many clients do you have during the course of a year, typical year at this facility?
I would need to look that up.
Rough number.
A rough number.
You don't know.
I don't, I don't know. Our average length of stay is around 50 to 60 days and we stay relatively full throughout the year, give or take some seasonal changes. So that would be the closest I could get for a number.
Well, we could, I could probably figure it out if I'm going back to high school courses and.
Maybe Excel spreadsheet I could do.
Yeah.
Sheets and math and whatever that PowerPoint thing is. What about hours and perfues for clients, et cetera? Do you, do you have any restrictions in that regard?
So our clients live with us during their care, but they go to bed by 10 o'clock every night, so they don't, once it's dark, we don't typically go outside. So they are inside, obviously in the winter, that gets a little more difficult around here when it's dark at like five o'clock to have some outdoor time after dinner. But they are all in bed with lights out by 10 o'clock at night.
And I recall some restrictions on visitation from clients, friends and family. What's the story on that?
We have an approved visitor list that has to be approved through their therapist and the clinical director, and we only do visiting on Fridays from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m.
Okay. Did we, did we have a client agreement from you last time?
We did. You actually requested it with respect to the Naperville facility. We submitted that. It was a fairly heavily redacted document, but you did have that.
Could you just submit one for the record for this facility redacted, as you see appropriate?
Happy to do so.
Okay. You're doing right. Are you paying attention or are you doing math?
He can do that in his head, like I cannot, so.
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm far more impressed that I didn't see a calculator come on.
I took it out when you said, like 140 to 150, I just say, you're turning them over every, 12 every month. Yeah, I was confused with that number two. Let, let's take board questions for this witness, if there are any follow-up questions. And if you miss now, we can go back to room later. Okay.
I won't rat.
Well, then let's, yeah.
If I could just ask for one more clarification, if this comes up later, clients are not permitted to have their own cars at the facility, correct? Just we don't want that because it's part of the traffic. Thank you.
Okay. Who's next?
With that, I'd like to ask Brendan May from KLA to come up.
We recognize him so you don't have to go through his qualifications.
Thank you. This is Brendan May, we're at KLA. So we conducted a follow-up traffic evaluation to follow the same parameters of our original traffic evaluation, mostly to determine the findings that we concluded three years ago, whether those were met or not. So that methodology included conducting 96-hour two-way traffic counts on Morningside Avenue from Thursday to Sunday. As part of this evaluation, we also looked at peak period turning movement counts at Morningside's terminus at Gary Mills Road to the south. Overall, the results of our comparison of the daily traffic counts indicated that the average daily traffic on Morningside is less than what we had originally estimated as part of our study three years ago. And this largely confirms the findings of the original valuation that we prepared, indicating that the facility is a low-traffic generator and has minimal impacts on the traffic operation of the roadway system, that the additional trips generated by the four beds do not result in a significant increase in traffic on the roadway. Trips that are generally made extra to the facility are by delivery vehicles, physicians and psychologists vary and do not result in additional regular daily trips they would see from the employees. And most importantly, that Morningside Avenue is going to continue to operate at its existing functional class with probably the same traffic volumes that we saw three years ago.
Are you aware whether there has been any, there have been any complaints about traffic? Are you aware whether there has been any, there have been any complaints about traffic from anybody in the last few years?
Not to my knowledge.
Not to your knowledge?
I can say that I did ask that question of staff. As you know, there have been no complaints filed with respect to this hearing, and I was told that in this facility that they had not had any complaints about traffic, but I asked staff to confirm just to make sure.
No, I'm not, I'm not going to ask that.
That's fine.
We in on this. If you're, if you're unaware, then.
We were unaware. They have not reached out to us and no one has filed anything.
Well, we have neighbors here that can speak if they care to. What's next?
Okay.
Well, any traffic questions from board?
Okay. Thanks all very much.
Nice to hear.
Good to see you.
Yeah.
Right, I just, do you want exhibit numbers on this report so you put them in? Or I was presuming you've got all those.
We've already marked it.
Right, right.
Identify them with numbers, exhibit numbers.
Just want to make sure that everyone, yes, you do have a track.
Traffic study.
Oh, I bet it's, the traffic study was six. I just want to make sure you're where you got the traffic study. And you also have Conresnext report, which is exhibit seven.
Well, you guys only have.
That's what I'm saying. I don't think, the traffic study's not in this package.
No, no, we submitted a standard.
Let me just pass my exhibit around.
I can, if you would like to see it, I've got a couple of extra copies.
No, just exhibit, I'd like to.
Yeah, we ought to, you ought to pass out the KLAO study and the Resnick study. Or whatever you have. What's yours?
My name is Erin Bowen. I work at Conresnick, and we provided a property value impact study. Would you like for a break to distribute the study?
Already exhibit, and I think it's, is it seven?
Yes, this one, this one is seven. Got, I think, two or three copies of this. I'll just start pulling them out.
We can share them. Why don't you begin all these S and O papers?
Like I said, my name is Erin Bowen. I'm a senior manager at Conresnick. My qualifications are I'm a commercial real estate appraiser and property value expert. I'm a member of the Appraisal Institute. And along with my colleagues, Andrew Lines and Pat McGar, we have studied potential impacts that various property types may have surrounding property values ranging from solar wind facilities, cell towers, transmission lines. And in this case, we were tasked to study the potential impact of group home care facilities on adjacent property values. So in this case, you know, the facility of the Montanito Group Home Care Facility at the Winfield location was operational in March of 2020, received approval from, to go from eight beds to 12 beds, and was operating such in March of 2021. So Conresnick provided a analysis of group home care facilities on adjacent property values for that conditional use permit from October 2020 for that approval that was granted. So we were tasked again to make sure that there have been no changes to any of the findings. Our primary question to answer was, does proximity to group homes affect property values? And we attacked this question threefold. The first of which is to review published academic studies, to also interview market participants, and then finally to perform our own paired sales analysis. Our own research uses the methodology outlined in the Real Estate Damages textbook published by the Appraisal Institute, written by Dr. Randy Bell. The methodology outlined in this textbook says that if there is a legitimate detrimental condition that exists, there will likely be a measurable and consistent difference between the test area and the control area. So what we do is identify a test area, a group of properties surrounding this potential influence, and identify any transactions. And then we compare those test area sales to control area sales. So properties of similar characteristics that are removed from the influence of the property, in this case, group home facilities.
What period of time?
Um, so in our study, we take a look at the subject itself, which became operational in March of 2020 as an eight-bed facility, and then again as a 12-bed facility in March of 2021. So we did look at the subject property itself and so analyzed everything that occurred after the property became operational as that 12-bed facility. Our conclusions overall showed that there was no quantifiable or consistent detrimental impact on those test area properties regarding either sale prices, prices per square foot, time on market, marketability, or rate of appreciation. So going to the subject property itself, on, direct you to page 32, we've got the Winfield location. We established that this test area is the homes immediately surrounding the property. So we've got that aerial map and, you know, a box in yellow highlighting which properties we looked at to see if there was an influence that the facility had on adjacent property values. On the following page, you'll see that home that Mark alluded to earlier that sold in July of 2021, that was after the facility was granted its 12-bed conditional use permit. It sold for $1,310,000. You can see it's immediately adjacent to Montanito facility. It shares a property boundary with that. To determine whether or not the facility had any impact on that property, we identified a control area. So that is everything beyond that test area location up to three miles of radius. We looked at properties that were $1 million and more that were built within 15 years of that test property, so after 1997. Um, we were able to identify 10 controlled properties that sold in that similar timeframe. You can see that the data shows that, on average and median, sale price was also about $1.3 million on a price per square foot, the subject, or excuse me, the test area property sold for $366 a square foot, whereas those 10 controlled sales sold for a median of $233 a square foot. I also want to highlight that the test area property sold for above list price, this property was listed on the market for $1.3 million, and then it sold for $1.31 million. And that is atypical for homes of this caliber. Typically, they're listed at sell for below list price. For these 10 controlled sales, it was about 7% below list price. I also want to point out that the days on market was about three months for the controlled sales for the test property, the property that sold immediately adjacent to the Montanito facility, is sold for, within 61 days, or about two months on market.
All the sales were arms-length?
Yes, arms-length. The property that sold just the facility, it received multiple offers. It was confirmed with the agent that it sold at market. And like I pointed out earlier, it sold for a shorter marketing time and above list price and at a higher price per square foot than its controlled sales. So for the subject property itself, I think I can say definitively that it did not have a negative impact on the property values surrounding that property. But I also extended my analysis to other facilities. There is another study of the Center for Discovery Group Home in Glenville. In this case, we did both the paired sale, but also a sale, repeat sale, so a before-and-after analysis. We identified in the test area surrounding that property, were there any homes that sold before the property became operational as a group home? And then if those homes sold before, did they again sell after that group home became operational? And we tracked the rate of appreciation. So when it sold prior and then after, how much did that jump in, sale price go up? And we compared that to the area of the ZIP Code and the federal housing, excuse me, home price index. And so we identified eight properties in a test area that sold on a median rate of appreciation of 3.27% compared to that ZIP Code. Over that same time period, sold for 2.76% per annum. So that facility did not affect the rate of appreciation. On the next page, a similar paired sales analysis shows that, again, when you're comparing those test sales to its controlled sales, doesn't have an impact on price per square foot. We also looked at another existing group home facility in Medford, Massachusetts. This was also another Montanito facility, had similar results of no impact on price per square foot for homes that were selling immediately adjacent to the group home facility compared to homes that were farther away, but also had similar physical characteristics. So I wanted to wrap that up. We did have other analysis in our impact report, but these were the most relevant to the subject. There are also a couple of slides here that relay the findings of those published academic studies. The first of which indicates that there was mixed results when the Greater Baltimore Community Housing Resource Board looked at over 1,000 transactions, and they indicated that their group home could not be considered a certain predictor or cause of residential property values in relation to the facility. Some, there was a study done in New York City on supportive housing development, and they found that within the first couple of years of the development of these properties, there was no change in property values. But after a couple of years, the homes within 500 feet or less actually exhibited an increase in property values. And then the final study that we included in our analysis was another appraisal firm that indicated that eating disorder treatment centers had no measurable impact. It was statistically insignificant. So given all of our, our analyses, our, our studies, and a review of the published academic studies, we have determined that there is no quantifiable negative impact to property values by being adjacent eating disorder care facility. Sale prices, price per square foot, rate of appreciation, marketability. These results mirror our findings from 2020 and were further corroborated by the adjacent property that sold to the facility itself. Any questions?
Questions from the board? Simone, I've been on this board for some time. We've had many real estate reports. Typically, they are comprised of two sentences. First sentence is, "I'm a real estate expert." Second sentence is, "There is no impact on value." Your presentation was by far the most comprehensive expert testimony on this issue that I've ever heard, at least on this board. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for the compliment. I'm sorry, did anybody else have any questions?
I guess you did include the first sentence that said you're a real estate expert.
I am a real estate appraiser, and I have been one for more years than I care to.
I would say like the chair, I've been doing this for an awful lot of years, and I've never had a project where our best analysis, not only the property next door, but that is, with great respect to the one, is the one property that was concerned the last time that they might not be able to sell their property, and, you know, sold it, sold it for more money than the market, sold it faster than the market. It's, you can't get better, better facts than that.
Thank you.
I'm going to wrap this up. As I, as I said, you do have information on all the standards. If you've got any questions, I mean, we're certainly here and happy to speak about it. But I'd like to jump to some of the important benefits here. You've already heard about the incredible need in the community for this, and it's right here in our community, the community of these facilities. But just some of the things that came up as concerns last time. Traffic, as you heard, last time we were here, we said no adverse impact on traffic anticipated based on all of our studies. And there's been no adverse impact on traffic. The traffic generated was actually less than what we thought it was the last time when you unanimously recommended this project. And using that same conservative analysis, they've also indicated they anticipate no future adverse impact. Same thing on property values. We've just heard it far better than I can. But I really do like when we identify that. I'm not asking you for me to bring you back in three years, but it's a pleasure to be here three years later and to be able to say, we said it before, we actually did even better than what we thought it was going to be, and we showed there's no adverse impact. And the other thing I love about Conresnick is it's not just that we're looking at this site and surrounding the site, which is critically important. The national studies show the same thing all over the country. We also talked about the fact that this project was built to code in our original hearing, as confirmed by county inspectors and approvals. Operations were done by the county. Observations were done by the county and applicable health codes. Probably has been maintained to code. Any issues that have been identified have been addressed. The owner, we believe, has been proven to be a good neighbor and has committed to continue to operate in the same way. There are, again, no project or property changes identified with respect to this. The last piece, always the most important on this, as I said, how important this use is. We know it's appropriate because for eight beds, you already, it's already permitted use. We know that continuing it works because you approved it for 12 beds, and not only has that proven to have no adverse impact, but those beds have been filled. There's a real need for it, those people are out there. There are numerous health and community benefits of operation of this use to the residents, to Page, and surrounding communities. And we believe the continuation of this use is appropriate, beneficial, and expect it to continue to operate without adverse impact. You have on the record from a prior hearing some evidence from a number of neighbors who wrote in letters, were a little surprised that unfortunately, while we know they were sent in, and you wrote some tests on it, but we've got a lot of neighbors who said very positive things. We really appreciate that. With that said, I want to close our formal presentation. Requested the right to come back if there are any questions that are raised by neighbors, we can respond to those. And asking that you recommend approval of this conditional use and, and also asking that that be without the restriction requiring that we come back in again in three years to have it be done again. As I said, we're here, happy to answer any questions you have.
Can I just, I just have the vague recollection that we discussed your garbage disposal system, and you use regular residential garbage disposal just like everybody else down up and down the street?
That is correct.
And then we'll continue?
Yes.
Tell, just describe, whoever can do this, describe a little bit about deliveries to the site. What those, what's delivered and what the delivery vehicles are? And then also any sort of going to, you know, who visits the site, emergency vehicles. What's the story on that?
Yeah, so most of our deliveries are Amazon, so coming in Amazon, FedEx, or UPS. We don't have any like US Foods or large delivery vehicles that show up. We don't have any like US foods or large delivery vehicles that show up when they want, make it around. The prop, the pond that is there to get to the house and with the power lines, it was too much of a risk. So we do all of our food shopping and things ourselves. So it's just typical delivery vehicles that we could see in any neighborhood. And then your second question.
Radically?
Yeah.
Emergency vehicles?
Emergency vehicles, we average about for a year. Not average, that is the highest we've ever had per year and it's typically ambulances that will show up. And then occasionally our fire system or smoke alarm system is hooked up to the fire department. So if we send it off while cooking, then the fire department will show up unfortunately. So it's a good thing I'm not cooking in that kitchen, but. So they will have to come to clear the building and that happens at around once a year.
Okay, thank you. Board questions? Anybody? Anybody in the audience want to make a statement in favor of or in opposition to this petition or ask a question? If so, please raise your hand and I'll go over the rules. Just two people, two ladies. These guys are your husbands.
Hey, you talked last time. You talked last time. We stay home.
Okay, so I'll ask you both to be sworn in together and then when you begin, tell us your name, spell your name. Tell us your address and where that is in relation to this property. And then if you could. You know. Give us a couple of key words that capture your position and then you can explain it. So. Go ahead.
Just out of whisper, from the testimony about to give this cause out here, it will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Who's first?
I'm Sarah Murphy in your PH one. My question is the traffic and I understand he did it at Morningside in Gary's mill. Oh, I'm sorry. It's OS 415 Morningside. I'm the last house right before you hit the Washington. But they did the traffic study at Morningside in Gary's Mill. We have two other entrances. And I'm sure the other, all the people came in the other two entrances during the four days of the study. Cause we have a lot of cars and we have the hill and I watch grandchildren. So I'm walking and the cars speed over that hill. And that's my biggest concern.
Are those cars related to this facility?
Yes, yes. It's the same cars. It's the same cars. They wait. Yeah. It's the same people that they, especially if they're like getting to work, they're going fast.
So it's, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's a manageable problem. Anything else?
Well, is it just eating disorders? Because I have heard that it's more than eating disorder.
I think I know, but.
Do you want me to come back up there?
I have something to say with that though.
You can answer from there.
We treat primary eating disorders. There is a very high rate of co-occurring other diagnoses that show up with eating disorders. Such as anxiety, depression and trauma, but we treat eating disorders.
What I knew, I have no problem with that, but I've heard that you've now taken in mental situations.
They are all classified under the diagnostic and statistical manual for psychological illnesses. So it is all classified as a mental illness.
Well, they did have one. Escape, can you say? And we had cop cars, drones and everything all over.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Hi, my name is Kathy Reeve. It's R E I F. And I live two houses. I'm actually down on Morningside. I have two houses from the facility. The only question I was having was about the person that did, they lost them. They didn't know where they went. They escaped. And we had police on, they didn't mention any of that, which I was surprised.
When was that?
Nothing to do with the bed. So that's why I really didn't want to say too much, but.
But it's just, it's more activity there than what.
She mentioned about the child street. Yeah, we're women. She already said about the side road that they did do for the traffic, because there is a lot of traffic. The people are really nice. I have no issues with any of the clients or anything or the staff. Yeah, they do go a little fast, but I've called a few times and said something. They've talked to the people. We do get a lot of deliveries there, you know, just fine, you know, I don't care. But I mean, I wanted to say we've had no issues client wise or staff. They've been very, very nice, you know.
I wish they would walk on one side of the road instead of splitting.
Let me ask you this. It, it sounds like you're raising. Of your legitimate concerns, but you're not opposing this petition or supporting this petition.
As long as it's just eating.
Well, yeah, because I was told, okay, sorry. No, go ahead. I was told that, I forgot how many months ago, Montana actually sold to a different company, which we were never told about. That's a different company. And it wasn't just eating disorders. It was mental disabilities also. And that was from a staff from Montanito who is no longer with them.
So Montanito is still the ownership of this project. And one thing I'm hoping, by the way, when you leave, as I said, they want to be good neighbor. I hope you come talk to them because some of what you're saying is news to us. And you, and so we'd like to make sure that you're a contractor. It sounds like you already have called, but I appreciate that. And I'd love to get more information, which isn't necessary for the CBA on, on the incident you're talking about. Because while I'm aware of that happening in Naperville once, actually before the conditional use. We're not aware of it here, but.
It did happen here. They had drones up and everything. But we were never, never told how whatever happened. They had to come to our house.
This, I watched this debate last night on television. It was complete chaos because everybody was talking at the same time. I didn't learn a thing. And I don't want to have that happen two nights in a row.
God, I forgot I'm being.
The only thing I was going to comment on is, I think one of the confusions here is that. Eating disorders are identified by the state of Illinois, by national health codes as a mental issue. And so I think that maybe some of the confusion here is that this is a facility for eating disorders and eating disorders. You know, are considered to be, I probably said that, I can't, but. A mental. It's identified as a mental illness. Yeah.
And I think to comment on your question on the us being sold, we're private equity backed. And so that partner changed, but Montanito itself has not changed. And what we, what we do is still the same. Our funder is just a different person.
Is Montanito Real Estate Holdings LLC the same entity?
Yes.
That was one of our conditions.
Right. Montano Real Estate Holdings LLC is the same entity. The LLC that owns the property has not changed. And what's the operating company called? Montanito. And Montano affiliates remains the operator. It's two Montano entities. One is the owner and one is the one that operates. That has not changed since, it's 2020 when it was an eight bed.
But the intent. Well, we'll have to sort that out for our recommendation because. You were persuaded, I was persuaded last time and I'm equally persuaded this time. That you have a very professional operation, which is managed by very professional staff. And I don't want the LLC to continue with some. Different support from staff, et cetera. So we're going to have to.
And again, to be clear, Montanito, the Montana real estate and Montanito and affiliates. Are the exact same entities that were here before you in 2020.
Alright. Thanks. I'm going to conclude the public comment. Anything else from the board? Sir, Mr. Gershon, you've already sort of made a closing statement, but do you want to answer any further comments that were made by neighbors?
Only to say that we really appreciate the neighbors coming here. I actually really appreciate the most that the indication that they called. That the staff were talked to and I would only, you know, please ask then if it, if something concerns you again, reach out to them. And, and please speak to them at the end of the meeting. Because that's, that's who this client wants to be. They want, they want somebody.
Yeah. I meant your timekeeping procedures to permit, say, a quarter of an hour of leeway so that people don't have to speed. Alright. I'm done. We're all done. I presume. Record will remain open for the receipt of any of these additional letters that have been.
Thank you.
Offered, but not yet received or at least not on our record. And we'll consider your case at our recommendation hearing. Well, we're pretty close. I mean, time is not an issue here. Why don't we consider it November? So we're sure we get these letters. October is, you know, like next week.
I think this is the only copy of exhibits ready.
I have, I have multiple binders with copies of those exhibits if you need more of them. I just need the pieces that I cut out and gave to you. So it's a full binder, but if I can get those back at the end of the meeting, I'll put them out and I'll give them to the staff.
I'm going to, I'm going to give my binder to the staff and this, this, these will be our hearing exhibits. Then I'll ask the staff, I'll ask the staff to just email. Alright, I think we're done for the evening, right?
I think so. Thank you. So what would the date? So it will not be the meeting next week.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. It'll be the November 2. I'm here.
I just want to verify from past experience. That you will not, I will certainly be there or whatever it is.
Won't take any additional testimony from anybody. It's a deliberation of the court only. On this case and any other cases that are up for that evening. It occurs at 5:30, November 2, in this room. Okay, thanks very much.